Ms. Diviazio.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Menard.
Here.
Dr. Camara.
Yes, we have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting. A member of the public who watches the recorded meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with a reasonable requirement regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair as not to interfere with the meeting. Anyone?
Mr. Mattos.
Okay, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, 3.1, we need to approve the December 8, 2022 minutes.
Vote.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, votes. 1.4, the student report. We have Ryan Neal.
Student government of the lecture reports the following. Mr. Barson in the lever. The Vera Production Club is looking for its greatly expanding diamond production of licensed sports on the group. Six students have been hired and new equipment has been ordered, which will allow us to stream multiple events at once. With most outdoor sports being moved to away locations because of construction, streaming program will take on added importance. Close of fall sports season, we have a fall sports banquet next week, and for this winter season, members of student government have expressed the idea to keep generating school spirit so that can we have been having theme nights for boys and girls basketball. We have also come up with the idea to do a new program to inform students on what's happening. Diamonds LGBTQ+ club was recently renamed the Pride Connection instead of the outdated Gay Street Alliance. Club made the table at the open house and had several excellent conversations with students and parents to help reassure them that Diamond is a school that welcomes students of all positions. Drama also hosted a karaoke night. The key club is going to participate in the winter parade this weekend, but it rained out. Open house was well attended and we saw many interested young students to get a chance to see what Diamond offers. The diversity club is working with Mr. Bobby Bailey to display cultural diversities in the halls and cafeteria. ELL teacher Rachel Grande also throws an international night or day to celebrate our cultures. We've also proposed a question to Mr. Rebelo. We were wondering if there would be an opportunity to expand our extracurricular offerings with the new building.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, Ryan.
Yeah.
Why don't you tell the committee members what year you're in and what Sean's doing?
I'm a junior and I'm an electricity.
And how's the school year going for you so far?
It's going really good, actually.
Good grades? Everything fine? Don't say anything bad, you're on cam, so. Right, I know you're one of the good ones. Nice job.
All right, 1.5, citizen input. We have Mr. Mattos to discuss something on the agenda.
Good evening, members of the school committee. I'm Ryan's Matthew Dragon, confirm he's a great student. I want to call to your attention this evening, if I could, under new hires, we have a new directed study tutor. I'm taking my three minutes tonight to ask for your consideration in creating a directed study teacher or a study hall teacher going forward. If the intent of this class is to provide lesson plans, direct instruction, things of that nature, that would really fall under a teaching job, not necessarily a tutor job. As it stands right now, regardless of the person who was hired, and I think you have a great person in that position, struggling with a class load of 36, a class load of 48, that would be a challenge for any individual, myself included, to manage that load of students. So if we are going to maintain a non-union position, I would ask that some additional support be granted to that position to accommodate those large class sizes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, just to clarify that directed study.
Could you hear him?
Program.
Yeah, it's the study hall. We had the same issue with how study hall.
Yeah.
Aren't going to do the gym, because they're doing a lot, correct?
That's one portion of it. That's just an option, yeah. There are kids that have traditional study halls, like the kid that has AP, needs extra time. To clarify, because I think, and we've been dealing with this week too, this is a non-credit, non-lesson plan position, there will be.
It's coming up in the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, we can discuss it then.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It was way at the end, we were hoping it'd be over.
2.1, the MSBA.
We're going to pass on that for this evening. The contract is still not finalized. It's getting there. We have one issue, still an insurance issue regarding our pollution coverage, and Suffolk's been very cooperative. We're just trying to get to a happy meeting in order to keep their costs down, which will be our cost anyways, and we may have to get some for the school as well. So we are trying to coordinate that as to the pollution coverage, and the school may take some, take some extra on because we'll need it as well as Suffolk, but hopefully by the next meeting we'll be.
I believe we already have some coverage.
We do, but it's missed our coverage a little bit more. Because obviously.
Have they been helpful?
They've been very helpful. When it comes down, obviously, there's a lot of asbestos and things of that nature in the ground, or it could be. So it might be well suited for us to increase our coverage anyhow, which will again offset some costs over at Suffolk, but they've been very cooperative. We're just plugging along, getting it done.
All right, and next month?
Yeah, and they've been working anyhow, so it hasn't slowed anything up. They're out there working.
Yeah, great.
So we'll pass.
Good.
All right, 3.1, other matters, personnel, Mr. Ben.
Yes, for the committee members, you do see the listing of personnel that are here that have been hired to various positions. Almost all of these are extracurricular activities. The directed study tutor that you do see that was just spoken about, she was the second one down there, Ms. Gabrielle Camara, she only started about a week and a half ago. She's getting her feet wet and trying to get the lay of the land. And the last person on the list, Mr. Richard Vickery, he's in as a long-term substitute because one of our regularly appointed metal fabrication instructors is out on medical leave right now, and we're wishing him well. But the others are all grant-funded positions. They're, most of them are for like two hours a week, or two hours, two hours a week, or up to a maximum number of hours. All of them have to show justification for who they're working with. They're on a timesheet so that they have to document everything that they're doing, and they're under the scrutiny of whoever the assistant principal is in charge of that content area.
Was there questions? Mr. Egan, you had on?
As far as the directed study, I just, my question was, and I know Mr. Mattos mentioned, you know, and you mentioned it doesn't really go along with a lesson plan. Is it, it's not a requirement to have a per se teacher in there? Because these kids, technically, it's a study hall. They should have work coming from other classes, unless, you know, the only caveat to that is if they have a question.
Yeah.
But even having a teacher in there, to have a teacher to be able to cover all subjects, it's just not.
And that's why we ultimately created a position for it, right? Is to help support when needed, when kids have trouble, or, so to clear up that clarification or question, it was, it's no credit, no instruction for that teacher. We are assigning her a mentor, so if she does have help, that's her first time in a school too, so we want to, someone that she can ask direct questions to. For those large classes, we're going to look for some relief there, because I can get into why, you know, it ends up like that, because I was surprised.
Is that all they, or just certain times?
Just one period.
One period. But most last semester, it was, how many kids were each?
I would say 10 and under. 10 and under. But we ran into some issues, and we're dealing with it within our schedule, because we've added shops, we've taken on more kids, and we've added restrictions to our schedule, such as common planning co-talk classes in all four grades, financial literacy, where we've added kids, but we haven't, you know, it's creating, it's creating rigidity in our schedule. So we're looking at that, and that's why ultimately, some of these students didn't have anywhere to go for a single period. But we are looking to get Ms. Camara some more support with a mentor, and even during those classes, we're taking a look at how can we provide some relief.
I know, address Mr. Mattos. You guys can discuss that.
Absolutely, yeah. This question has, over the past two days, been on our radar in large groups.
And these other, these other positions, you said they were up to two hours a week?
Most of them.
Will they have like a two days a week schedule, like, hey, I'm here Tuesday and Thursday for an hour?
They will.
To be able to provide that availability to the students? How does, how does that get scheduled?
So most of these students that are going to get their referrals. Okay, so just pick one.
So it's on a referral basis?
Let's do the history, let's do the history tutor. That's on the, there. That would be a referral that would come, could come from the guidance counselor, hey, I saw Brian Bentley today, he's having struggles and that, okay, here's the referral, blah, blah, blah. We got this. He posts when he's going to be out there, because it's done by Zoom, or it could be after school. Mostly it's Zoom, he goes on and he works with whoever shows up. It's widely publicized, okay? It's an extra, it's another extra dimension of getting help to our kids. The only reason it came about, among other reasons, is that it is grant-funded, and we're utilizing grant funds for this before they run out.
So not only the guidance counselor can, can a regular classroom teacher can refer?
Absolutely, absolutely. As well as a parent can call up and ask, my son's doing lousy in history, do you have any extra help? Well, sure, it's a classroom teacher first, and then we have extra help on top of that.
Perfect.
But that teacher can stay after school with that student.
We do have one day a week that the teacher.
One day a week until 3:15.
Students who need help.
Yes.
That's terrific.
We do ask the students to make an appointment.
Anywhere else.
Okay, because it's a lot easier when the student is having difficulty, and the teachers have it posted in their classroom. My extra help day is Tuesday, it's like that. So they know, Tuesday, you're staying after school, can I make an appointment with you? I'll be there, so you know I'm showing up to get extra help, and you can tailor make that 45 minutes for me. Whoever else needs help.
Good.
Very good. All right. Moving on to two advisory appointments.
Yes, you have a Mr. Jordan Hubert, and you see his bio there, and it is that he is a class of 2019 graduate from Diamond's Electronics Program. He is very interested in maintaining his skill set and working with the electronics program. You see that the recommendation is there to appoint Mr. Hubert as an industry business advisory board member of the electronics program for a term of three years.
Need a motion to approve?
May.
Need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, votes?
Thank you, we'd be very happy about that, he's very excited.
3.1, other matters. We need to take a vote on that discussion.
Recommendation that you approve the contract between Mrs. Nebz and the district as negotiated. Everything we discussed was accepted by, you know, so there's the extension as well as the adjustment relative to her work with the MSBA.
Any motion?
I made that motion.
Need a second?
Terrific.
Yes. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
So congratulations, Helena, I'll see you that much earlier tomorrow, and we'll keep you around.
Oh, I'm sorry.
6:00 AM. 6:00 AM, I'll be back.
3.1.
She is a lifesaver, yeah, she really is.
Yeah.
3.1, other matters, use of facilities.
We do have two recommendations, two applications, and you see for the use of facilities. The first is from our LPM students, is that they're trying to raise money to help defray the cost of their graduation, in particular, their graduation outfit that they have to wear their nursing, their ENCLX exam, and they're trying to help to fray that cost. They came up with the idea of a spaghetti, they're now calling it a pasta dinner fundraiser, because it may not necessarily be spaghetti, all right? And what they're trying to do is to utilize facilities here. The facilities would be that of serving out of the cafeteria area, okay? The chef down there has eagerly participated with them, and just the other day, walking them through the material that's down there. They're not using anything dangerous. It is, they're going to buy their own materials, they're trying very hard to get their own pasta, buy their own sauce, they're just that they need a place to host it. So the food will be served out of the Diamond Cafeteria, because of the facility of coming through like in the buffet line, and then they're going to utilize room 251 as the place to eat. Everything is disposable, everything is throwaway, no mess. I told them, if you come in, it's clean, you eat, it's clean, and we will provide that facility. So they're trying very hard to do this. It is going to be on February the 10th from 5:00 to 7:00, and the cost is, they do have a cost associated with it, $15, and children under 10, $5.
Nice.
Pretty reasonable.
Any meagres? Recommendation is to approve.
Vote, you may.
Waiving the fees.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'd be very happy to hear that. The other one is the veterans.
The next one is the Veterans Association of Bristol County, and they're requesting to use the gymnasium for a basketball game fundraiser, to be held on Friday, April the 21st, from 6:00 to 9:30, and also to waive the use of the facilities fee. They contacted Helena with the whole, they have their application in. If this is approved, then we contacted to submit a liability form, and they are raising it in order to, for themselves, for the, for their own coffees there, to help out other veterans.
Right. Recommendation is to approve the request from the veterans.
Vote, you may.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you, and you can see that there is some associated literature on the next page, as we have a packet of information to begin, as you say there.
All right, 3.1, D, the student competition travel requests.
Yes, getting it and keeping time sensitivity, and the committee members to be very aware of when our students are both out of state traveled for competitions or overnight competitions that require that, trying to get in front of this so that the committee, if they have questions, can ask it in a timely fashion. So this one that's coming up is going to be for the Traditional Skills USA State Conference. The dates are the 27th or the 29th of April. That will entail traveling on a Thursday and staying there, competition on a Friday and staying there, and the award ceremony on the 29th. And that's going to be in Marlboro, Massachusetts.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have we ever stayed there before?
Oh, yes.
We have?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I knew it to Marlboro, but I.
This has probably been going on since.
I know, I know. Just trying to stay there.
Recommendation is to approve the Skills USA.
Vote, you may.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
The advisors would be very happy to hear that.
E, class of 2023 graduation.
Putting it on your agenda, this is the other J month in our calendar, January, getting ready for June, and I've made contact with the city of Fall River, and I think I've reported this to the committee before. I did speak with their facilities manager, who is a Blythe Egan, spoke with her over the Christmas break, and we worked out even finer details. They are going to give us, for them, the ground crew, that they have two of them, two custodians, three security guards, there will be outside bathrooms along with porta-potties. There are no restrictions that they're putting on us, and there's no charge. They are doing this, I've spoken with Maria Ponce from the city of Fall River, spoken with Ken Pacheco, who is the director of operations, and we are working hand in hand. They want to make this as successful as possible for Diamond, under our circumstances. And heard very nice words, where that it's only right that another Fall River school step up to help out you. So I thought that was very nice to hear. We are working out the final details with the company that will be providing the audio. We were going to use their system. They're also going to video it and stream it live on Fred TV. I've heard from the company that's going to do our audio, waiting on to hear back from Fred TV, but at this point, for the committee, it is June 8th, please mark it on your calendar, would love to see everybody there. And this will be the farewell to the class to ever graduate from this building and setting on a, embarking on a new adventure. As some people have already said to me, it's going to be difficult to step onto a derpy athletic field when I have Diamond in my heart. And I said, it's graduation, move on. So anything we can look into, I know you just said you're going to have it live on Fred TV. Anything we can get it to the other communities? Sure. I haven't, I haven't looked into that.
So as far as public access, that's something you could look into, but we always have a live stream, so if they go on YouTube, or when we share it on Facebook, or what we've done in the past is email it to all parents too, is they click the YouTube link and they can watch it live.
I understand what Mr. Jennings is saying, all three towns, as well as the city, have cable access. So if, if we can work it out with that, with whoever's recording it, to either, to send the recordings over to them so they can play it on their cable.
I'm not sure how that works. Mr. Rebelo and I have a meeting tomorrow, actually, they put on our calendars, but tomorrow in order to discuss some of these details, so that we're all over this as we head into this part of the school year. That's definitely one.
They might even come and fill it themselves, you know? So if we open up the invitation to them, that'd be awesome.
Derby High School is very welcoming to us, by this morning. They're very good.
Great. Thank you. F, temporary part-time cafeteria.
Yes, this came about as a result of agreements that was filed by the cafeteria staff, and it had to do with very minor stuff, but one of the things that came out was that during certain parts, especially in the morning part, they're, they're prepping up much more food than they've ever done before. Right now, we have a current population, roughly 1,400 students, a little more, like that, and it's, as you know, it's a free breakfast that's being provided, and a free lunch. One of the things that the cafeteria manager, Lisa, wanted to talk about was the fact that she needed all six cafeteria workers on the line, serving the people all at the same time, due to the schedule that they were still operating under from prior, this goes back a while. It was rotating, so they were always down people on the serving line, which made it a little hectic. As a result of everything that came about, Mr. Brilliant can add more if you would like to, as can Mr. Rebelo, we now have all six at the line, but they were concerned about we still have this prep work to do while we're all serving. A solution came up to look for an advertising, this is what I'm asking for tonight, is to advertise for the posting of a three-hour-a-day temporary part-time person. This would be from 8:00 in the morning until 11:00. So this person would not be involved in serving the lunches, this person is strictly on the morning of getting it all ready to go. Why? Our cafeteria workers are having their break now moved to the morning session, which takes away from their preparation time, and they have their lunch prior to the lunches, so all six are available to serve the lunches. This person would be that stopgap from 8:00 to 11:00 to fill in those times designated duties, and that while they're aiding their, having their break and all their lunch, this person is working straight through in order to keep everything going continuously.
Temporary basis.
It's a temporary.
It's not in the contract.
All right, so that's what I'm saying, is, is this, is this legal with the unions?
Yeah.
The union was part of this agreement.
So they don't, are they part of the union, or they're just a?
No, at this stage, the union will only be David Reed as part of, they filed a grievance because of the problems that were existing over there, and this is basically a resolution of the grievance, but it's temporary, we're going to revisit the issue at the end of the year to see if this resolves it, because it really takes a complete jumbling of the schedule, as, as Mr. Bentley just said. So this should, we think, eliminate it, and then at some point in time, we may bring it back to the committee for, to put the position in, but it will always be a part-time, three-hour-a-day position.
Just correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have a teacher assigned to the cafeteria and students?
We do, we have a teacher along with some students from the culinary arts program. They have been wonderful in doing their work, but again, it's a teaching situation, Mr. Diviazio, and he has opened up his own line in the cafeteria of called alternative foods. So what do I mean? Well, they're serving the regular standard commercial food that the students eat, right? He may have a healthy alternative that he's working on, and he has the students do that. They do help out, the manager did say that, that the students were very beneficial in helping, as was the teacher, but this is to fill in during those times that the cafeteria workers are both on break and are having their half-hour lunch prior to the start of the lunches being served.
We've made them change their lunches now, and their breaks.
Yeah.
Because there's no way to keep that, the line completely full in terms of workers, unless we change all of their breaks and all of their lunches, and this is to accommodate them, to make sure they always have a full complement, so that one can go out and take their break and so forth and so on. Well, hopefully it's going to work.
I mean, I agree, they all need to be on the line for the 45 minutes to an hour that the kids eat breakfast, but my thing always was, is I thought we had students and teachers, a teacher in there that is assigned to the cafeteria, that was doing the prep work before, went along with those, with the cafeteria staff.
They do do.
So, I mean, I just don't think, I don't want it to be told that all the prep work stops because they're all online, because we do have a teacher and students that are supposed to be doing that.
You are correct. While they are on their break in the morning, cafeteria workers, and while they are having their lunch, which does take the span of time, they have a half-hour lunch, and that has been broken into two sessions also, so that they don't all eat lunch at the same time, just like half the crew eats lunch, the other half then eats lunch, there's a layover where none of them are on the line, that's when the students step up. They do, in the morning, do some prep work, yes, but again, it's a teaching environment. So Mr. Willett, who is the chef that's in the cafeteria, is also showing them like the nutritional values of things he's going through as it was a classroom, that's what he's doing. They do pick up the slack, yes, when the workers are having their break or their lunch, okay? This part-time person is that other person's set of hands right now, because at some point, all the workers are out at the back doing it. The students are doing certain things, this person is another person in there. For example, they serve a lot of salad, I'll go there, they serve a lot of salads a day, okay? One of the first things that popped up is that the person who does the salad, which is a cafeteria worker, because she's been doing it a long time, she was saying, I can't get my work done because I come in, now I got to go to break, I come back, now I got to go to lunch. So this person could be, this person, what's that?
You don't have to go to break.
It's in their contract. That would be a whole nother thing.
Well, they'll tell, they'll tell you that they don't take their breaks too, that was part of the discussion, that they're not taking their breaks now because they can't get their work done.
But this is a question.
It's only three hours a day, but it's just, you know, I hate to see people filing grievances because they can't get their work done. That's, that's the only thing I have.
This was all brought up through the.
Oh, yes.
Oh, the union was part of it. We told them, we actually told them what Mr. Diviazio just said, this is, they got to get their work done.
I mean, what's going to happen? That's, secretary is going to say they can't get their work done, they're in part-time and they're, I mean, filing grievances to get another worker, that's, whatever. I mean, it's only three hours, but.
She never says that.
You want work.
Ms. Kitchen and Mrs. Torres have their hand raised to speak.
On? Here's the cafeteria position.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Ms. Kitchen, go ahead.
Sure. When we met with the association, it was, is very positive about having that three-hour person bridge over, because the instructor with the vocational kids, really, he's teaching more than, than a service production. So it was, it was kind of a mutual agreement or mutual understanding that this might be beneficial to get us through to the end of the year, because we're serving more lunches at this time, or breakfasts. So, and by changing the hours and for lunch, so we can have more service, it was, it was beneficial for everyone.
Very good. No, thank you. Mrs. Torres, have the.
Yes, sir. What I wanted to say is that the number of students that are assigned to the cafeteria is variable. It varies. We do have, if we have a full complement of students, you know, because of absences, that number can change. So we do have a set number of students that get sent over to the cafeteria, but field So we do have a set number of students that get sent over to the cafeteria, but field trips, students are out, you know, doing other things, students are absent, that then changes the number of students that are able to go to the cafeteria. So it's not always the same number of students that are there.
I hope the students say we have a teacher there.
Alright. Alright, thank you. Alright, the recommendation is to approve a posting for the temporary.
Vote for me.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oath. G, we have the capital skills grant.
Yes, on the paper that's right behind it, members of the committee. In keeping with the new policies that are out there, we, Diamond received a five-million-dollar capital skills grant, which will be split among three shops, Auto Collision, Culinary, and Metal Fab, and along with money that will be put into the building itself. Okay, they give it as roughly three million dollars, split among three shops, and two million dollars will be put into our brand-new building. It is necessary for the committee to actually approve and accept this grant, if they would like the five million dollars.
Okay. About that. Questions?
No.
Recommendation is to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Accept it.
I make the motion to approve it.
We all do.
Somebody's got a second, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Oath. Thank you.
Who's still like to help keep that two-point-five?
Yeah. H, we have the H A A S. Mr. Kitchen?
Uh, yes, with the previous capital skills grant that Dr. Fur had submitted for the two-point-five million, there are, there were two machines that the Haas, the Haas machines, we put it out to bid, and the successful, successful bidder, the responsive bidder is Haas machines. I'm asking you to accept those. And I, I believe, I don't have the document in front of me, but I believe it was about a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Alright, the recommendation is approve the bid.
Yes.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oath. While I have you, we have I, monthly financial report, Mr. Kitchen.
Yeah, nothing exceptional, we, we are making, later tonight, we'll have some transfers. We've been doing relatively well in supplies and equipment, salaries are on, on par. And it's just for edification, and then the transfers that we're taking from this year, we're going to be transferring from the abatement that we usually do during the summer, and that's available cash, because we're not going to be doing the abatement with the construction. And the other is that we anticipated an increase in our insurance, and there isn't that large of an increase, so therefore, we're moving it into the equipment that we're going to be trying to purchase.
Any questions or comments on the budget? No. Moving on to J, expenditure approvals, Mr. Kitchen?
Uh, yep. When we go through the list of them, there's Tremblay's for special education, there is a purchase for supplies for advanced manufacturing, athletics. Again, Seaside is a review of the protocols of special education, and then the alumni jackets for the, the varsity jackets that they give out. Then E, EAI is the procurement of two-hundred TI eighty-four, or eighty-four calculators for the math department, the standard datebooks, encumbrance, and then there were the two items for carpentry. One is a, the edgebander, and the other is a panel saw. And then Bristol Community College is for a course that we use for office technology.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The, all the two machines for carpentry, those are two-piece equipment that can go over to the new school?
Yes, yes, actually, the edgebander that they have, they currently have an edgebander in carpentry. I'm not sure of the age, but there was an issue with it last year, where there was a pot that was, couldn't be provided by the manufacturer, so actually, Advanced Manufacturing made it up, and they fabricated it for us. I just think, and if there's an issue with it already, then moving forward, we're going to have to buy it. So if we have the app, Mr. Patello applied for a skills capital grant for the sum of about two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, and the edgebander was listed on it, but since we got the five million, they didn't give us the two-eighty-four. So that's why I'm trying to look at alternative funding sources to support his, his department.
Alright, thank you. And also, we had the revised with the spring track expenditures?
Yeah, the spring track is asking, because we're probably going to be, you know, limited space, and we may end up being over at Talbot, there is a running board, fifty-yard dashboard, some items that Coach So, Soaz has asked for, in the amount of eleven thousand, I believe, or twelve thousand dollars.
Alright, any questions or comments on the expenditures? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve all the expenditures. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oath. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to K, transfers, Mr. Kitchen?
As I mentioned earlier, we're looking to make some transfers to cover the, the equipment for carpentry, mathematics. So therefore, the transfers would be from the insurance lines and the abatement line, and then they'd be moving into the appropriate equipment lines and college courses, and then some small miscellaneous transportation lines. So the sum would be two-hundred-and-eleven, two-two-five, from the insurance and abatement lines to those affected instructional lines.
Need a motion to approve the recommendation for the transfer? Need a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oath. Alright, then we have the student activity, class accounts.
All the class accounts currently are in a positive fashion, so therefore, I would just ask you to accept them, place them, place them file.
Any questions or comments on the accounts?
Help the balance.
Yeah. Seeing none?
Class of two thousand twenty-two didn't make a decision on what they wanted to do with their own imbalance?
They have not. I know we were looking at it for this month, I have not heard, I, I know that the advisor had just returned to work this month, I believe, or last month. So therefore, we'll have to liquidate those, I, I appreciate your attention to that, Mr. Beegan.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
We will have it for next month.
Alright.
Thank you.
And house building facilities subcommittee, Mr. DiBiaseo.
Alright, Mrs. Torres, still on?
Yes.
Alright, so we, we talked about the projects that are ongoing, the addition on the house on Burnside Drive in Swansea for, who's that, for People Incorporated, what's, what's the house on? Maria, what's the addition?
Yes, yes.
People Incorporated. So that's moving right along, if you want to explain about that, Maria, go right ahead.
Certainly, People Incorporated is moving along quite nicely, we will be ready in a few weeks to go out and start the electricity. We've done the underground plumbing, you know, the, the addition is going up, we'll return for plumbing when they're ready at that stage, but electricity will be starting in a couple of weeks.
And all the other projects are moving right along, Maria?
Yes, yes, Westport, we've just gotten permission through the plumbing board to proceed with the plumbing there. We're also doing the gates at the cemetery. Representative Paul Schmidt was out at the site today, at the cemetery, and took some photos of our students and posted it to his social media, so it's great, great for the kids.
Great. Moving over to, you have an application for a house to be built?
So we have someone who has an interest in having us build a home, he is a developer and real estate individual. He does have three sites for three homes. He has said that if we so choose, that we could build a home each year for the next three years. I will be meeting with him to discuss more details. I have been told that it is going to be for elderly residents, elderly housing, so I'm assuming affordable housing, but those details I will get when I meet with him. He was unable to come in today, this literally came in today.
Alright, so just to update the committee, the building committee looked at this proposal. The house fits the criteria what we're looking for, but there's some questions that Maria and the attorney are going to be sitting down with the developer to go over, and bringing it back to us in the, in February.
Alright, thank you. And the MSBA?
Nothing to report at this time. But we do have, is that under this one or the next one?
Yeah, no, it's under expenditures, revised.
Paul, we have those two expenditures for colliers and castle booths?
Yeah, well, we'd like to try to, they're, they're the monthly statements, actually, of their performance, so what we'd like to try to do is have a monthly item on the agenda for expenditures, and as we start doing construction with Suffolk, that will be included also. So therefore, these, these expenditures are for KBA and for colliers for the services performed.
Right, so the castle booths is, their monthly bill up to date is seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, and for colliers, it's sixty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Mr. Kitchen, you need to hold on that?
I would, because right now, we are the funding source of the project.
Okay. Need a motion to?
Vote for me. Motion to make.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oath? Nothing. Oh, superintendent report.
It is continued on the next page, and it's very quick, as the words are there, so I'm not going to read everything, but I'll do the highlights. The committee had previously approved an international trip to Peru, the advisor has canceled that trip due to the political unrest that is in Peru, it's not safe to go. Secondly, emergency athletic action plan, kudos here to Mr. Bobby Bailey, who is on this as we're moving into going to other sites, and we do need to have that plan updated to reflect what happens when we go to other sites, and he is doing that. The plan will be completed prior to the start of the season, and I'll provide everybody with a copy of that, so you can see that.
Right, I mean, if something's going to come up for a vote, Mr. Chairman, we'll be hearing this in February or March.
Oh, you should have it, shall we, yes.
In February.
We're looking at February, that's when they start looking ahead to the softball seasons and baseball and so on, you'll have that, shall we? It is in, we have one, but now it needs to be updated to reflect what's actually going to happen. And that'll all come together with whatever fields we're going to be doing away in. There is no home, but there'll be a home and away games. Grade nine exploratory has just completed, people were very, the students were very excited about getting placed into the shops. There is a complete report on the next-to-last page that's prepared by Mrs. Miller, and this will have a breakdown also, some of the highlights here was that seventy-five percent of the students selected a different shop as their first choice, so they meant they'd be one thing, and their mind gets changed. Kudos here to our faculty for getting them excited about the programs that are here. And then you can see the remainder of it here. Highlights were that, we had three students, one from the town of Swansea, Jack Sostorio, he was the number-one overall point getter, number two was Madison Maderis of Westport, and number three, also a Swansea resident there, was Elena Barrio of Swansea, who opted to go into HVAC, so good for her. And number four on here is the admissions report, happy to report that after the first round of applications coming into Diamond, which was December the fifteenth, six hundred, there were originally six-hundred-and-forty applications, we are now up to six-hundred-and-fifty-five applications from students from the city of Fall River and the towns who are seeking entry into Diamond. We have come across something that the committee put in place about admission verification for residency verification, and that has been worked upon by Mr. Rabello, myself, I've had a small handler in it, and Mrs. Miller, and we are implementing that as we speak, except we have identified, we need to receive the letter. The last one is on the recent DECA competition that just took place down the Cape. Just to go to the quick of this, out of the twenty-seven students who went, twenty-four are going to be continuing on going to the state competition. So that is a very high percentage, and that is my report.
Great. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I ask Mr. Bentley, on the admissions report for the students coming in for next year that apply, to give us a breakdown of the three towns in the city with the flight.
I will ask that.
How many have applied?
I'll ask that of the guidance directed tomorrow, and I'll have that information, I'll mail it to you.
Great, thank you. And the date that the sending, they need to send their reports in?
By February the seventeenth, which is the easy way to remember, it's the Friday before February vacation. That's when they need to get all the information, and during February vacation, they then sort it down by ranking, how much according to the system that we have in place.
Alright. Thank you. P, calendar events. February will be our next school community meeting, scheduled for the ninth of February. Of course, we have the school vacation.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for the, for the record, the oversight committee will be meeting on January twenty-third at three-thirty, and on the twenty-fourth, the MSBA committee, which we push back a few weeks, will be meeting at five-thirty.
Okay, those will be?
Posted.
Posted, yeah. Alright, do we have any, I don't know?
No.
Nothing? Forty-eight hours, and we have no correspondence?
Before we, before we go, let me check another thing.
You good?
Yep.
Alright. And our next scheduled meeting is February ninth, and then need a motion to adjourn?
Vote for me.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oath?